All right. Good evening, folks. This is the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission, which is now in session. It's Thursday, September the 7th, 2023, and the meeting is taking place here in the Carabelle City Hall Chambers. We will first open with a prayer by Commissioner Melander, and then I will lead the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So please stand, everyone.
Let us pray. Most glorious and gracious heavenly Father, we're here before you again this evening, and we thank you for all the graces and gifts that you've given us. I also have heavy on my heart tonight that we've had some tragic incidents that have occurred in our community that's affected some of our community members and also one of our city employees. And I ask that you guide and hold them in your hands in the days to come. And also, our joining neighbors where this storm came through, please continue to hold them, guide them, and direct them in a positive manner as the days come before us. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening and welcome. I'm glad to see you all here. Good evening. Thank you all for silencing your phones. And if you would like to speak during public comment or during one of the agenda items, you need to fill out a speaker card, and you will be allowed three minutes, maybe longer if we decide that. And you'll have one opportunity to come to the podium per item. So you must come to the podium to speak, and no out loud outbursts will be allowed. This is your warning. You will be asked to leave. We had a request by the clerk to amend the agenda, and I did announce that on my social media and some email blast, but now that has been removed. But we'll discuss it briefly under the clerk's report. So we have the consent agenda, which is the September 7th, 2023, City Commission regular meeting minutes and the attorneys' invoices for July. Did everyone get an opportunity to read those minutes? Do we want to entertain a motion?
A motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I just want to make a quick note here that this commission did hold a 2023-2024 budget workshop for the General Fund and the Water and Sewer on the morning of September the 5th. It was originally scheduled for August the 29th, but it was rescheduled due to Hurricane Idalia, is how I call it. But minutes are not taken for workshops. So but regarding the September 7th commission meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. Now is the time for a public comment. And if you have something to comment on any item that pertains to the city that's not on the agenda tonight, now is the time to do that. Okay. Is that for public comment, Ms. Keisha?
It doesn't say.
No, not for public comment. We're just here for what's on.
Okay. Do you have an agenda item on there? Excuse me. You need to put your agenda item where you want to speak. Okay. But we're going to move forward. We have commissioner reports, and Commissioner Walden has had a little minor accident, and he wasn't able to make it tonight unexpectedly. And Commissioner Brown, do you have a report for us?
I do. Hi, everyone. There's a lot of you here. I'm glad to see you all. Thankfully, we made it through the storm unscathed. I'm grateful for our city staff who worked tirelessly on storm prep. I've had a lot of people in the community say some great things and voice their appreciation for all of our departments and administrative staff on what you guys did for the storm. Thank you so much. We saw a great turnout for the September 1st Friday last weekend. Be sure to join us in October. It's October 6th next month. And then also on Saturday, the 7th, is the Takes Hell 5K in Bay Fest at St. James Golf Resort. There'll be a lot of activities going on that day there, but we'll also have a little something going on downtown as well to extend the festivities. It should be fun-filled for everyone. So come out and see what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Melander?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to echo the same sentiments that Commissioner Brown just expressed, that we expressed in the budget workshop prior this week. And I made the observation of the entire city employment base during the preparation in anticipation of the hurricane coming in to us. And it was wonderful to see that entire team. And that's the entire departments, water and sewer, streets and roads, the staff here. Everyone prepared extremely well for that storm, and they were well ready to come here. They did an excellent job, and I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gray?
I have nothing to talk about.
Okay. And I do have a report. It's similar to what the two commissioners just reported. And what it is, is I circulated during the impending Hurricane Idalia, is how I call it, impacting our community. I circulated several public service announcements, like I usually do during something like that, to keep the public informed on our preparedness actions taken by the city. So I want to read to you my last PSA that I posted on social media and circulated in an email blast. And it goes, "After landfall of Hurricane Idalia yesterday morning, Carabelle city staff conducted an assessment and evaluation of all city infrastructure to determine if there had been any damage or loss as well as any harm to the community caused by the storm. The damage assessment included the water and sewer treatment plants, towers, lift stations, equipment, and infrastructure, the city roadways and infrastructure, streets and roads, facilities and equipment, the police department vehicles and support equipment, the fire department building fire trucks and support equipment, the city hall buildings, city rental properties, the airport buildings, fuel tank and infrastructure at the airport, the history museum, Carabelle History Museum, the Crooked River Lighthouse facilities. All had zero damage with no trees down and no lightning strikes to infrastructure. When we were alerted to the possibility of this storm hitting our area back six to seven days ago, city staff began preliminary preparedness planning. All the employees saw this as an important event and took it to heart and carried out planning and precautions for our city and equipment as if it were their own, and they really did. The Carabelle city employees are dedicated to our great city and did a superb job watching over it as the storm approached and made landfall. Thank you and job well done to every staff member. Your service is truly appreciated." And during that time, I had received reports from the public that the Franklin County Sheriff's Department and Duke Energy did great work during the storm event as well. Thank you. We value your service and dedication. And of note, the Franklin County Senior Center, Kent Gordon Johnston Museum, the Carabelle Chamber of Commerce, and the St. James Health and Rehab Center facilities all paired extremely well with zero damage. So that was the end of my PSA, my last PSA for Hurricane Idalia. But here, I would like to interject to mention the Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board Chairman, Mr. Sullivan. He checked on the airport facilities the day before the storm made landfall and immediately after the storm had passed and provided a written report to the administrator each time. Mr. Sullivan also kept the airport status surrounding the storm updated on the FDOT Disaster Preparedness Aviation Database. Our volunteers are extremely important and helpful to the community during emergencies and disasters. These volunteers include the emergency management search members and volunteer firemen, and they should not be forgotten. So that's all I have for now. Thank you. And we will go to the city attorney's report.
I have a number of items tonight, no particular order. The first item is this, that the McDowell Housing Project is a no-go.
No-go?
No-go. So explain all the reasons, you know, financing, flood insurance, property taxes. The project became, and construction costs, became financially unfeasible. So the property, the closing documents remain escrow. What I asked them for, as I said, that's understood. Please send us a termination letter. So they will be sending us a formal termination letter. And the result of that would be that the deposit money will be forfeited to us, and the property will remain a city property. And we will, we're going to have to talk about and consider, you know, where we go from here as far as, once again, surplusing the property. That's the path we're going down. We have had one citizen express interest. He's on the agenda, so we'll hear from him, Mr. Sims. And but we backed in that. So we need to figure out what we're doing with it. The other item, we request action on this one, is we've had a case pending, and it predates some of you all sitting on the commission. But Dr. Grantum, there was a, we had filed a claim against his estate over in Bay County to recover some back rent for hangars out of the airport. It was upwards of close to $12,000 that we were seeking. Then they objected to the claim because there were, there are defenses and there's an argument on the other side of why they don't feel they owe all of the money we're claiming. So we're not denying that they owe some money, but as far as the amount, we're just feeling it. And because they objected to it, we had to file what's called an adversarial complaint in county court, which we did, and is scheduled, scheduled to go to trial in November of this year. We were sent a court order of mediation, which Courtney and I attended, and we reached a conceptual settlement, right? And I explained to everyone, it's always difficult at mediation where normally if you agree to terms, it's done right there. But because we're a city, it has to go to you all for final approval, ratification. And the settlement terms that were reached were simply that they would agree to pay $8,000 on our claim. However, and this is a big however, the claims against the estate exceed the amount of money in the estate currently, right? So there may not be any money left over to pay our claim. However, the reason for that is because of one very large claim, an over million dollar claim, that is disputed. So they're litigating that to try and, and literally, the way they described it was it could be, they're just disputing it entirely. So that claim may go away or itself gets settled for some amount less than is being claimed, which would leave money in the estate to pay other claims, which would now include ours if we agree to the settlement. And the way that would work is if there's enough money to, and it's all very, it's run basically statutorily. So it's not like they can pick and choose who would pay over who else and this and that. It just gets, the claims get paid. And ours would now be a recognized claim. They would be disputing it more of $8,000. And the way that would work is if there's enough money to pay all the claims, all the claims get paid. If there is not enough money to pay all the claims, then you get, you're basically, I'm going to call it pro rata, share of the balance that's left. So it could be something less than $8,000. But it also could be zero. If they pay, they have to pay out on that first claim, and it means nothing for us. We get nothing. The logic to the settlement is that we're locked in an amount. We no longer have to go to trial, spend the money and expense to go to trial to really achieve the same result. Even if we won a trial, that doesn't mean we get paid. We just get in line with everybody else at $12,000 if we just did, if everything went our way at trial. But we will spend, in my opinion, every bit of three or $4,000 going into trial. So it's my recommendation that you all prove that those settlement terms are right enough, the court will approve.
And so you would like a motion to accept the $8,000 grant in the state settlement for past student hangar rent?
Yes.
All right.
Make a motion to approve that settlement.
One second.
Okay, very good. Do we have any further discussion on that item or questions regarding that? And this is the item that has appeared for years in the financial statement as $9,000. Thanks for putting it here. All right. So all of you, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You're in favor.
I am.
That motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mr. Hartman?
And then I have some good news.
Okay.
That's okay. But the good news is we have, so the city was sued in 2022 on what I'll refer to as the Chapter 119 Public Records case. We received judgment in our favor on all the issues. So we resolved that case, and we won that case. So that case is done. The only next steps will be, I'll file a motion to seek recovery of attorney's fees and costs in that case for having to litigate for federal part of two years. Second good news is we had the bid protest case that hung up to ARP2 project. We prevailed in that case as well. We received a recommended order from the ALJ, the administrative law judge, that was in our favor on all the points, which there's still a 10-day period to file what they call exceptions to that recommended order. But those are not the type of thing that would change the result. So then a final order will issue, and we can go ahead and either have a special meeting around October, follow through on the tentor award to Three Rivers, and go ahead and board that project and get it through. So we need to have a good week here in court. And that's, and we will also file, in that one, we will also file a motion to recover our costs. We don't get to recover fees in that case. And they did put up a bond, Three Rivers did, of $1,800. If our costs exceed that, then Crook Creek would have to pay those costs. But we're tallying those up as far as our costs on that. But we'll recover those as well if there are any to recover.
Okay. Do we have questions?
Ideally, how soon could we get started on the project now that we're at this point?
I'd say within 30 days, or hopefully less.
All right. I'm going to ask during the clerk's report if we can schedule a special meeting. But I'll do that transfer also.
Because Dan, you said 30 days. I heard you mention we need to wait 10 days, have a special meeting, and proceed with the project, which is way behind. And I would, I for one, would love to get the project moving.
Understood. And I know you all gave me those marching orders, which in legal world, we are moving relatively quickly.
Well, I'm not questioning you. I'm not questioning your speed. I'm questioning whether after that 10 days, which is lawfully we have to do, if we can have a special meeting and we can go ahead and let the contract proceed with the project.
What I'll do, it will not be on the 10th day because they still have to issue what's called a final order. But I will let court, I'm going to let Courtney know as soon as I can to get it to everybody and get that special meeting set up. No problem. Thank you.
And the golf cart ordinance?
Yes, golf cart ordinance. You'll have a draft of the golf cart ordinance, just revisions to comply with the legislative, 2023 legislative session, October 1st, some new criteria going to effect, specifically that they raise the age, minimum age of 15. And you need a learner's driver permit or a driver's license up to age 18, so between 15 and 18. And then over 18, a governmental, issued a governmental identification, photographic identification, right? So not necessarily a driver's license, but a form of government photographic identification. So I made those minor changes, just as an amendment to the golf ordinance to comply with state law. And you'll see that over the next couple of days. And anybody has any comments, get them to me. Otherwise, that would be, hopefully, I'll approach reading them at the next meeting.
Okay. And I just wanted to mention here that last, at the last meeting, I had brought it up, and I said that it, it went into effect in July the 1st. Then I researched it the next day. That was all in news articles, you know, online, July the 1st. The only thing I could find was the bill, the actual bill, which hadn't been completely edited and said October 1st. But I sent that information to Dan, Courtney, and the chief, and it is definitely October 1st. All right. Do you all have anything else for Mr. Hartman? Okay. And I just wanted to say here, since Mr. Hartman has just let us know the status of the old school building that is going to come back into the hands of the city, if it hasn't, and it will very soon. And we have not had an opportunity, this board has not had an opportunity to discuss what the future use or uses or what may happen with that property. And I think under, I would ask that under the clerk's report, she's going to talk about scheduling a workshop. And that we consider scheduling a workshop to discuss what we would like to see and so that the public can have the opportunity to let us know what they would like to happen there as well under the clerk's report. All right. We have Ms. Courtney.
All right. Sent out department reports. Everyone but Water and Sewer, I didn't get that one on time. So did you all have a time to review those, any questions? The progress on the installation of windows and doors on Water Plant Building. They have been ordered to reinvent and then to come in. I did speak with the contractor last week, so he's ready to get started as soon as he gets the materials. Installation of the lift elevator at the Justice Building yesterday. They ordered the footers. The actual elevator part won't be here until about mid-November. So they're continuing to work on the platform and the fabrication that they need. But we're looking at somewhere mid-November before they can finish with the elevator. And we just found out, I know they're not D E O anymore. They've changed the name again. But they've just given us approval to go ahead and award for the procurement for the grant administrator and the engineer for the Landmark East and Landmark West sewer infiltration and inflow improvements. We only received the two bids, Inovia for the engineering and Fedbox for the grant administration. And so I would like to get approval to go ahead and award those.
I will make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have that motion by Commissioner Brown. We have a second?
I'll second.
And the second by Commissioner Gray. Is there further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
That is all we have.
Okay. Do we have anything else for Ms. Courtney? All right. Then we'll move to Ms. Keisha, our city clerk. Sorry. Okay. First off, I've got a list of meetings that we already have planned for September. September 14th at 5:15 will be our first budget hearing. It's our tentative hearing. September 19th at 1:30 is our CRA meeting. September 21st at 2023 will be a planning and zoning meeting, and that will be, we will have the cemetery on that. Our second and final budget hearing will be September 25th at 5:01 PM. And our next commission meeting, October 5th at 6:00 PM. Also talked about the agenda item that was requested to be added. He, I spoke with him in great detail, and he's down in South Florida. He was not ready to travel up. I think he was expecting, he didn't realize it was just a presentation. And so he asked that if you were interested to schedule a workshop, if anybody's interested, you can schedule a workshop. And then he would make the drive up and present. That way, he would have more time. And then I sent out all the information that was provided to me, so. And speaking of workshop, do we, do we want, would we like to schedule a workshop regarding the old school building? I, we have already several meetings. We're already a week into the month, and we've got several meetings this month already with our budget hearings and our CRA meeting. I'm having old lady eye surgery this month, and that's going to take several trips to Tallahassee. So it's going to be difficult to, to.
I can relate to that.
Okay, relate to that. But certainly, we can schedule workshops in October. And then I had an idea for a special meeting after, but I'll ask Mr. Hartman for the airport bid award after our September 25th second budget hearing. But I'm wondering, is that not long enough, September 25th?
I will let Courtney know. What I'll do is that'll be the date I'll shoot for.
Okay.
Make sure we can do it that day, and then go ahead and do it.
Is that all right with everyone to have a special meeting for the airport bid award after, after? Okay.
Do you think we can do it right before, because, well, they're not like.
No, it won't last long. Not the final, because I've noticed.
I'll speak it.
All right, then. So we have that set away. And so then if we, if we want to think about scheduling a workshop in October. And if you did want to go ahead and schedule a special meeting, we could always add the cemetery on there because we need to have so many public hearings to change over the land use and zoning. So that would put us one step closer, and then we could have another one in October, have it back on October. Okay.
So have it at the same time as the airport bid?
We could have that meeting, and then if we could put, if we were allowed, then we could always add it to that meeting. Or we could reschedule. Okay.
Just, Dan, too, we could do the golf cart ordinance the first reading, so the second reading in October?
There's no action.
Oh, the special meeting is just piling up. All right.
Very, very quick.
Nothing controversial, yes. It's just. All right. Do we want to wait till October 5th to schedule a workshop in October? Or do we want to schedule, if we have a special meeting on the September 25th, we could schedule a workshop then?
Find out with me, whichever board wants to do.
Are we talking about for the golf, for airport, cemetery, or for the school?
We need a workshop for these. I do. I feel like we, I mean, we just can't go with that without even figuring out what we want and what the public wants.
Maybe we should wait till our workshop.
Okay, that's fine. Is that okay, Mr. Gray?
Because that one's going to take some thinking and a lot of discussion.
Yes, and asking of questions and finding out costs and that kind of thing. Okay. So, and what about this proposal that you have? The proposal is at the wheel of the board. So if you want to wait till October to schedule one for October as well, we can do that as well. And I'll just let the broker know. Okay. Yes, sir?
Well, I don't want to nut either word, but that broker, his presentation is a sales presentation. His presentation, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, is a sales presentation for the property and not a management request presentation.
Correct. He's, the state of Florida would actually purchase the property. He is the broker. The state of Florida would purchase the property, and we would enter into a land management agreement like we do with Lake McKissick.
That would be with the state.
With the state.
What this guy's presentation is, is just to see if he's going to get support up from this board to possibly manage that property.
From what I've understood in my conversations with him, the state of Florida would not agree to the Florida Forever, the sale unless they had a city or county or some other entity that's willing to take over the land management portion.
Exactly. And that's what I'm saying. So I don't know what he's going to say or to me. I mean, seriously.
What I know is that I would have an awful lot of questions.
Oh, absolutely.
And we would need some, you know, there's just an awful lot to discuss and take into consideration. discuss and, and take into consideration. It's an idea, certainly, we're not saying yes or no, so.
It's, and, and the point I'm making is an idea, but the idea is, is most of the questions I'm going to have would be to the state, not to this broker.
Yeah.
This broker's not going to be able to answer some of my questions, because, again, he's just trying to promote the sale.
And he expressed that concern as well when he decided not to come, that he probably couldn't answer some of the questions you were going to have. But I did tell him that I would ask all of you to try and start making a list of some questions, so if he did come for a workshop, if you did decide, we could get him some questions, so he could get the answers for you guys in advance.
And the land management plan would be required by the state, and I know that the land management plan that was done at McKissick Beach was $75,000, which we were extremely fortunate to have someone from the ARPC work hard to get us the grant to, to do that.
It may not be the time, but I'm going to go ahead and state how I feel. I don't think our city is staffed or financially set to manage state lands. That's just my feeling at this point right here. We don't have a budget for it. The burden of the cost of anything that we have to do will be on the taxpayers of the City of Carabelle, and I don't see us having that kind of budget. And we don't, certainly don't have the staff to manage it. So that's my feeling, and I open, I'll go ahead and open that door.
Well, if it, if it gets moved on, Bob, we can certainly have a workshop with that on the agenda. I mean, it's not on the agenda, so we probably shouldn't have much more discussion on it.
But anyway, well, I understand what you're saying there, but it was presented to us.
Yes, everything's good.
So we, we can make a comment, and that's where I stand. I just, okay, and I'll leave it at that.
There's a lot, an awful lot of questions that would have to be answered for, for the public, if you. All right, is there, so in October, at the October 5th meeting, we'll schedule a workshop for, in October for the old school building and anything else that comes up, okay? Maybe we'll have a, be able to have a special meeting on September 25th after.
Do we want to go ahead and, and have that? Go ahead.
All right.
If you need a motion.
Well, do we want to wait?
Oh.
Maybe we won't.
But it's just tentative, just for the public knowledge. It's tentative for September 25th, immediately after our second budget hearing in the evening, around 5:30. All right, is there, is there anything else? Okay, then we'll move to Inovia's report with Mr. Russell Large.
All right, thank you. Our DOT Small Communities Outreach Project on Baywood Drive was not approved for funding. That next grant cycle opens up in December and closes in March of 2024. We did split the project up into phases, as was recommended by the department. I, I'd like to suggest maybe, maybe the mayor, or Courtney, or both, and myself have a, a conference call with the administrator, the grant administrator, Ms. Maria Shawalter, and let's, let's get some feedback on our application, and oppress upon them the critical nature of that project and the importance of it, that it needs, it really needs to be funded, and just see where we can, where we can push, push that project along. I think that would be helpful.
Okay, that's fine, and we can, we can approach it like we, we are the Triumph, you know, just reaching out to find out what have we done wrong, what do we need to do right, or is there not enough residents on it, you know, what is, what is the issue?
Right.
Can we turn that in for a legislative appropriation?
Yes, we can.
But we have done that before.
We have.
So that property.
We haven't launched or anything yet, if we've got a project that's ready and we can turn it in, and it wasn't approved.
That's true.
And the debt runs coming up.
They can, they, right, they can't hurt, they can't hurt, so.
Do you know what we? Yeah, so this, do you, if y'all agree, I think we need to have a motion to direct Russell to develop a, the legislative, application for legislative funding on that project.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And I'll say.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and I didn't call for discussion.
Okay, next, some good news on Lighthouse. Finally, we got that, this grant amendments completed, and we're issuing the change order to the contractor, so we can get back to our, that Lighthouse, and add those additional folks who requested connection. So that's, that's good news. On summer camp, we advised Rizet Precise, the city's position, that the water interconnection is mandatory for the city's participation. She understood. We did let her know that we're seeking grant funding for that, and that she has agreed to provide a letter of support that we can submit all that grant application. We have started that application, it's an online application, and that's due on September 25th.
25th?
I'm sorry, September 15th. Okay, on Ryan Drive Drainage, we did request that easement from the property owner, had a little bit of back and forth, and we do have an agreement in place, so we're going to work with Mr. Hartman to prepare the correct paperwork there and, and get that, get that completed. Avenue C overflow boat parking, that permit is pending. On the golf cart crossings, we, the, the department wasn't sure how to handle that one, we, we had some back and forth with them as well, they've agreed to a certain methodology, and we'll work with Dan to prepare some paperwork so that that could be completed through DOT. All right, and lastly, the water supply well number five, we did have a pre-application meeting with Water Management District, which went well, and the next step there is to prepare and submit a consumptive use of that amendment. So we'll be working on that in this next period. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, do we have questions for Mr. Russell? All right, and, and then on your DEP Regional Resilience Grant Application for Sewer, Septic Sewer, they, they, it's, it's correct now, the 50% grant match is waived.
That's right.
For, for us, because we're disadvantaged.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, then, and, and you're going to move forward?
Yes.
With the application for the 15th? All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. And then we'll move on to the advisory board reports. We have Carabelle Waterfront Partnership, did you have anything, Ms. Tamra?
Just re-announce the coastal cleanup.
Okay, coastal cleanup, coastal cleanup. That work somewhere. Here, oh, thank you. Saturday 16th, the big coastal cleanup, my husband and I have participated in it for years, it's 8:30 to 11:30, and they meet here at the city pavilion on Marine Street, and at 8:30 or earlier, they're there for you to sign up, get your t-shirts and, and gloves and bags, and then out at the, across from the RV park at the Carabelle Beach Facility, they meet there as well, if you want to clean up along Carabelle Beach or McKissick Beach. So it's, it really helps, and over the years, I've seen a, a great change in, in all the litter and debris that's along our waterways, so thank you to the community for that. Then, Mr. Sullivan, did you have anything that you wanted to? I noticed in your report that you say you've got, you would like to advertise, or that we're going to need to advertise for some aviation. And do we need a, a motion to direct Courtney to advertise for these aviation advisory board members? One has passed away, and one resigned recently, within the last month.
A motion to advertise.
Okay.
To, they can seize on the airport board.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll say.
All right, is there, is that all right, Mr. Sullivan, under discussion? Okay, and, and.
And if he has, if he has any wording that you want to use?
Yeah.
We had the last one, it was fine.
You just used the last one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, we appreciate it. Then, and then the Crook River Lighthouse Association, Steve Allen called me, and they are currently installing the sound system that was funded by the TDC, and moving along with their pirate ship construction, and it did well through the, do you have anything else on that, Ms. Courtney? Okay, all right, so we will move to the public hearing, it's Resolution 08-203, and we will hear Mr. Hartman's reading of that.
All right, this is City of Carabelle Resolution 08-2023, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a public transportation grant agreement for Project 423905-6, for a design and environmental for runway rehab, close front, with the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% grant funding, whereas the City of Carabelle agrees to negotiate and execute a public transportation grant agreement for fiscal year 2024, project number 423905-6, to execute $300,000 funds for environmental and science services, whereas the City of Carabelle needs 100% grant funding for a design and structure of runway 5-23 rehabilitation, whereas the City of Carabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of general offer of the Florida Department of Transportation, 500% of the funding to make these needed cruises to the Carabelle Thompson Airport. Now therefore be resolved by the City Commission of the City of Carabelle for the Assembly and Regular Meeting on September 7, 2023, with the mayor being, she is hereby authorized and directed to negotiate and execute an amendment to the public transportation grant agreement, project number 423905-6, with the Florida Department of Transportation. A document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation as follows, Florida Department of Transportation participation 100%, $300,000, City of Carabelle participation 0%, $0, total project cost $300,000. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the public transportation grant agreement between the City of Carabelle and Florida Department of Transportation when fully executed.
A motion to approve Resolution Number 08-2023, prepared by the attorney.
Okay, very good, and we have second also. Okay, and that motion is back, Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Gray. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. All right, and our next on the item is the quasi judicial hearing, which we have none this evening, so we will move to new business, and it's the presentation of our September 30th, 2022 financial statements from James Moore Independent Auditors, and it's presented this evening by Mr. Mark Tang.
Thank you.
How do you turn that off?
Right at the bottom.
Right at the base.
It's down there. Technology, Channel, Technology Channel, Bluewater. Hope everybody is doing well tonight. I'll be short and sweet, I think the first, first thing I want to point out is, and I'm assuming you guys have both of these audits, I just want to point out that the Carabelle CRA, if you would, a lot of detail, this is required because you guys spent more than $100,000. This information is rolled up into the, what I call the city, the city's audit, so we're going to go focus on the City of Carabelle's 93022 audit and financial statements, okay? So just to summarize, you know, we have the Independent Auditors Report, which is basically page 1, 2, 3, 4, in a nutshell, basically says these financial statements are materially presented, these financial statements are your responsibility, my responsibility is to express the opinion on the financial statements, that's kind of what the report says. If you want to read it word for word, that'll be fine. Let's, let's look at the financial statement net position, page 11, I'll give you a second to get there. So the statement net position lists the assets, the liabilities, and residual equity for the City of Carabelle. Probably the biggest thing to point out is, at the end of the year, we had about $61 million and some change worth of assets. We had liabilities of around $11, $12 million. The residual equity, and this includes infrastructure for the city, your sidewalks and the parks and everything, the equity is $50 million. Obviously, most of that is tied up in capital assets, about $45 million, but you do have about $4 million of unrestricted funds, okay? And I'm just, this is a 30,000-foot view here. Page 15, which is your governmental funds, probably the biggest thing to note here is you actually ended up in the black, $1.2 million. That's really a good, a good year financially. Page 18, if you look at your proprietary funds, your water, your sewer, your airports, I do want to point a couple things out, we ended up making about $3 million, but let's put this in context, if you look at those capital grants we have, you kind of subtract that out, add back depreciation, really you made about $750,000. That's kind of the way to be looking at these numbers, even though it says we make $2.9, but in a nutshell, 750. I think that's important.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
All right, on page 17, since we're going, you talk, you've got your net position for your water, sewer, and airport.
Yes.
And the net position is basically your assets minus your liability.
Right.
Your value, net, net worth.
Yes.
And I just want to interject here, in September 2015, I look back, I've, you know, got my reports since '11, in September 2015, the airport was worth, its net position was $4 million, 62,809, and, and as of September 30 of 2022, the airport's net position is That's up $1,135,659. That's happened in approximately, well, since September 15, about six months, that, that $4 million was six months before our aviation advisory board took, took over to help Ms. Courtney run the airport, and I just want to interject here again.
Oh, you guys have done a great job.
That's volunteers that do that.
Y'all, y'all done a fantastic job.
I do appreciate it. Okay, thank you, sir.
I mean, the debt, the debt position, which we're going to talk about next, on page 30 and 31, I mean, I can't remember the number, but it was a lot of money owed by the City of Carabelle. You guys have, Bernie, you've done a great job.
It was something, $28 million.
It was a lot, it was a lot. But what I wanted to point out on page 30 and 31 was the low interest rates you guys have on your debt right now, 3.94, 1.3, 1.5, 2.7, 2.7. Go out and try to borrow some money today, you're 7, 8%, so, yeah, y'all do, y'all doing good things, no doubt about it.
And that page 31, that gives you a list of all of our water and sewer loans that we have, and that they come and go, and some of them are, are getting older, but that, that was, that was, one, one loan is $28 million in 2011, when I came on board, and with the help of staff, we got that worked out and reduced. And now, the total is $4,394, but some of them drop off, some of them come on as we expand our water and sewer system to be a regional water and sewer system, and as, as things get paid off, or we need to upgrade our equipment. But on page 30, it, it explains our long-term debt regarding this building here, it's 3.9% loan, and we'll have the opportunity to pay that off in 2029, and I've asked the commission to, all the different members that we've had over the years, please consider, let's start a savings account of some sort, or CD, to have the opportunity to pay that off in, in, in 10 years, 2029.
Like a sinking fund, almost.
Yeah.
That's good.
That would be a good thing, and then we wouldn't have to pay another 10 years of interest.
Especially with the high interest rates now.
And we don't know what's going to happen in.
Right, right, good point.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I just want to conceptually, without looking at page numbers, is you guys, because you expended more than $750,000 of federal funding, $750,000 of state funding, you had a state single audit, and a federal single. and a federal single audit. Well, if it's your internal controls and compliance over those dollars, we had no findings. So that, that's a good thing. And lastly, the biggest thing I want to point out is you've done a fantastic job, staff has. I mean, at one time, I don't know how many findings you had, we'll call them findings. But it was a bunch, and they would just go on and on. You guys have managed to get those down to two. And that is very impressive. And the two that you have, you're probably not going to get rid of them just because they deal with segregation of duties. You don't have enough people here. You just don't have enough people to have all the internal controls you need. And then the second one is basically the preparation of financial statements and some adjustments. I mean, I got to tell you, this is a lot of work putting this together. You, you just can't even imagine, but sure you can. But anyway, those are the only two findings you have as far as the financial statements. Tremendous job.
I know it.
So just, y'all cleared up a lot of problems in my mind. You ended up in the black, you got low debt. Y'all, y'all done a good job.
I, I want to say, in 2011, when I came on board, we had nine findings. In 2012, we had 12 findings. In '13, 11 findings. '14, 12 findings. In '15, we had 15 findings. In '16, 12 findings. In '17, 10 findings. In '18, eight findings. In '19, 11. In 2020, we, we really started buckling down on it in '19. And in 2020, we had five findings. In 2021, six findings. And for the fiscal year ending 2022, we have two findings now. And it took a lot of work on staff, and it took some work on all of the superintendents to come on board and develop that disaster recovery plan, account manual. We were not keeping track of our crude lead. We were not keeping track of fuel inventory. Thank you to the advisory board. Our CRA board was out of whack. We'd pay a $1.5 million payment back to that. We, we began adopting a final budget. Travel expenses weren't being handled. We were using the signature stamps for, for paying checks. Sales tax wasn't being managed just right. Health insurance reimbursements, we, we had to get that handled right. Old debt, old debt has now been written off. And I mean, it's, it's much more than that.
And it, and the CRA got paid back.
Yes, over $1.5 million.
Yeah, that was tremendous, yeah.
And we just had to do that year after year, make payments. And thank you, Ms. Keisha, for helping with that. I want to say too, I try to let y'all know every year, this fiscal year 2022, we ended up paying $110,000. The city taxpayers did $110,874 for contributions to the Florida retirement system, and $14,400 contributions to the health insurance subsidy. So that's $125,274 that the citizens have contributed to our employees' retirement system. And the employees contributed $26,024. I'd like for the citizens to know that they're paying.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, I study it. I'm, I'm really proud of it.
No, you, you guys have done a tremendous job, no doubt about it. Congratulations.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it.
Do y'all have questions?
Thank you, sir.
And I want to thank this board for helping to work with, help to reduce those findings, and Keith was on board for a good bit of that time, so.
Perfect.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I'll excuse myself.
Have a safe.
Thank you.
Back to Tallahassee.
Thank you.
All right, item two, discussion of possible action regarding alternative plans for the old school building at 1,001 Gray Avenue. And this is requested by Mr. William Simmons. Ed Simmons, if he would like to come forward and present.
I don't know. Just be quiet there, Simone. So, I'm William Simmons. I think I know most of you. I'm William Simmons, I think I know most of you. Good talk to you. This is not what I thought I'd be addressing today. You know, I thought, when I got a call this morning that McDowell had dropped out of this, I, I was very surprised. I thought I was going to have to get them to try to stop demolishing the old school. So... This is my house. In a bird's eye view. From the old school. Nobody is more impacted by me than this. If anybody wanted it torn down, it should be me.
Show that to the, to the public and, and this.
Get the right side up. These are the projects that I currently have going on Gray Avenue. We're building.
I have to turn it so the board can see it for a minute.
Sure, sure.
So that they know. And then we'll turn it back around.
We have a subdivision right here to build 40 little portable houses. Workforce housing. Next to it, on the other end of the road, we're building about five or six houses with larger lots. But my real interest is this 30 acres and 14 acres, and putting grain bed houses in there. So... I'm, I'm trying to justify rebuilding.
Mr. Simmons, can you go back to the microphone so the public can hear?
I'm trying to justify rebuilding and fixing the school rather than tearing it down. So Courtney's given me the plans for the school. And I've built a digital model of the school. Now I've got a floor plan. What I'd like to do is to use this school as my workforce housing to build these subdivisions that I'm talking about. I want to take the 12,000 square foot building in the back and turn that into a panelization shop. And I want to use the school itself for a dormitory for the workforce. Now, if the workforce can build the houses, they can also rebuild the inside of the school. The school is in very good shape. It doesn't look like it. Vandal's have broken out all the windows. Bears have pooped in it. Kids have started a fire in it. But structurally, it's got 12-inch concrete walls that are fine. It's got three inches of foam on top of that roof. It looks bad, but it's very functional. And with a little bit of work, I can get that back online. Now, I've hired the original guy from the school that maintained the air conditioning and the HVAC. And I've hired his cousin, who won the talent in that high school. And I believe we can put this back online with not a lot of effort, but some considerable expense. Of course, I understand everybody's concerned. They want it to be pretty. And we want it to be pretty. So I think, I think we can do it. If, I don't know how this would happen, you know, with McDowell and the position he's in. I thought what I'd be doing today is trading that subdivision for the school with McDowell. I figured it was a done deal, and, you know, I'd be able to pick the school up that way. But it's not the case. So if I'm here in the wrong time, making the wrong proposal, I apologize, but I scheduled this a while back.
Well, that's interesting. And, and so we're, we're holding on information from McDowell, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm 95, 99% sure McDowell is out. We're just waiting on the final termination letter, so they're not going to be proceeding. And the property, the documents that are basically held in that street, the city absolutely started looking at our options, right? That, I'll wrap that up, that's just going to get wrapped up. So that's done. So it is, you know, what is the next step out there with the school? And, and really, you know, this, this gets my brain kind of firing, is there's the open land out there. There's the land that goes with the school, or doesn't go with the school, however you want to look at it. I mean, there's the vacant land out there as well as the school. We looked at the school's liability. Mr. Simmons is looking at it as a potential asset. It's a lot of, it's an interesting mix.
How was it to hurricane in that little building out in the back? I think, you know, as these workers build these houses, they'll probably buy their own little houses, they'll probably move out of the incubator. And eventually, this would become an emergency shutdown.
Now, if, if, if this will be in the hands of the city, again, it will belong to the city here shortly.
Yes.
Okay, and actually, the documents.
It belongs to the city right now.
Sales agreements were never filed.
Correct, the deed was never reported.
Right.
So it's signed.
So, we, we always have to advertise surplus property. The city has to advertise surplus property. So that's, that's the proper procedure, is the required procedure by the state. So we would have to advertise.
Well, in this one, because Courtney reminded me of the processes. We did advertise this surplus before. We were required to do so because it's in CRA. Unlike a county, a city, where we have home rule power and everything else, we do have more latitude when we're selling property than other types of entities. We can act a little, I want to say that, I mean, we can act a little more like a private party than other governmental entities. But it's always good, right? Have a procedure, follow it, so no one's looking back on it and saying, hey, there was anything unusual about the process, so. But in this one, we're still in CRA, so we have to advertise it. And the question, the, at least the initial question in my mind, is, we did a small zoning change to the zoning district that it's in. Institutionally, what was it, institutionally? What is it?
Public use.
Public use, so it's zone public use. For almost anything, if it's not single, if it's not building demolished, single-family homes out there, we made a small change to the tax of, of that zoning category. This too would have to get a land use and zoning change so it could be used for the purposes of an end user, like Mr. Simmons or, or someone else. Because this is the first, I feel like, the first proposal or idea we've had where someone wants to keep the building. Previously, it was just looked at as a expense to take down the building, and then the land had value. So this is interesting. And finishing, I guess, is if we're going to surplus it, the city absolutely, just like we do out in Landarc, where we, we express, when we're surplusing it, when we're seeking anybody interested in the property, we can dictate what we'd like to see out there, right? We'd be selling it for this purpose, right? Which could be workforce housing, workforce economic development, those kind of things, right? But you then have to put people on an equal footing and let them bid on, or offer on.
So that's, that's what I'm listening to, is, and what I understood is, once the property is 100% back in our control, then it has to be as stated, advertise this surplus property. And Mr. Simmons may be the only one that makes a proposal to us. Then again, though, when they advertise it as surplus property, that opens it for anyone to come and make a proposal.
Yeah, anybody can make a proposal, but we, we can't dictate the term, essentially the terms of that.
We could negotiate.
And we can negotiate.
You know, you may say you want it to be for emergency management, or you want to have a shopping center there, or you want to have a, a community center there, or you want to have a technical school. You know, you can put that in your, your surplus advertisement. And I think that's where we need to have a, a workshop and, and agree a principle on uses that we would like to see happen to that property. Or maybe even, with all due respect, Mr. Simmons, maybe even the commission and the public, we would want, certainly want public input. We might decide that we want to, to keep the property. We just don't know. We haven't had an opportunity to discuss all of the options.
Exactly, and, and the attorney mentioned another option, that there's more property there than just, just where the building's at. So there's, there's different ways to look at it. Think about what we're going to do, what we're going to offer.
Now, I know with Mr. Shear's conceptual plan that we did approve, that had the 30 units on it, houses on it. The land that was in the back that's undeveloped, undeveloped, that was required to, for a retention pond that was needed for it. So if you were going to.
For rent, correct.
Yes. Well, no, for water management.
Water management.
Required that. But they, if, if the building was to stay there, then I don't think, Mr. Russell, it would require a retention pond, if the building stays as it is. But once you start disturbing the land, you're going to have to.
That's what she was saying, yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. That's interesting. And, and I, I want to say that Mr. Hartman mentioned that, you know, this possibly require land use, zoning change, depending on. So it's possible, quasi judicial, possible.
Yep, the zoning component of that is, please, I.
And, and I have had, I'm not going to go into a full disclosure, but I'll just let y'all know that I did meet with Mr. Simmons, and, and I, you know, we have discussed it briefly. So, but if, if it ends up being a land use, or, excuse me, zoning change, I will provide a full disclosure on that. All right? Anything else? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you.
It's interesting. All right, can we, can we continue, or do we need to take a break? I always ask that for keep, if it's not here, so. We'll continue, is that all right? Okay. Item three, discussion of possible action concerning Sunset Isle request to amend their ordinance to allow RVs in Phase 1 to the same extent that they are allowed in Phase 2. And this is requested by Scott Grunholm. I've never known how to say his name. You're going to.
It's like Gone Home, but it's Gronholm.
Gronholm.
Yes, ma'am.
I've read it time and time and time again. Never met you, I'm pleased to see you. And he's the president of the HOA Sunset Isle.
I'm pleased to be here. Have you sent this to him, or this is that letter I sent to you as an email earlier? I don't know if you checked that email or not yet. I just wrote up a little letter.
Thank you, sir.
For y'all.
Thank you.
You could just read this out loud, too, you know, for the record.
Yeah, okay, it's. I'll introduce myself, I'm Scott Gronholm, and I am the president of the Sunset Isle Owners Association. And so anyhow, I guess I'll just read this letter.
Okay.
I was, I was trying to sort of give you a, a background of why, or let me give you an overall, the, the development has a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. And the Phase 1 was originally sold, and then there were some owners in that phase. And then, I guess it was, this was before I came on the scene, but at some point, there was an economic hardship to where Phase 2 was requested to have RVs in Phase 2. But then there was a couple people that didn't care to include Phase 1 in with allowing RVs. So over the years, Phase 1 and Phase 2 have sort of been separated by one allowing RVs and one not. And so I'll, I'll just read this. Many years, many years ago, when the community was first being developed, the City of Caravelle approved RVs to be allowed in Phase 2. But at that time, there were a couple owners in Phase 1 that were against allowing RVs in Phase 1. And I feel, this is my personal, that there has always been a slight disconnect between the owners in Phase 1 and Phase 2, although we have the same covenants. although we have the same covenants. Recently, a vote was taken by all property owners, phase one and phase two, which met the requirements for covenants. And all but one of the votes was for allowing RVs in phase one to the extent they are allowed in phase two. Since our covenants are the same for both phases, there's a city ordinance, I think it's number 444, that only allows RVs in phase two. And so what we're requesting, I don't know legally how it needs to be done, but we're requesting that that ordinance can change to allow RVs in phase two and phase one. There's the main, a lot of the reasons I see in phase one, there's, there's a small building footprint that I personally am just having real trouble making it buildable. Is it twenty by fifty? Some of them are even fifteen by twenty, by fifty. Some of them are twenty by forty, but they're just a very small footprint and it is very hard economically to make a structure work with that requirement. The owners of Sunset Isle have voted almost in manners, just leave with, again, it was only one against, to direct the board, which is myself, to pursue any actions needed to allow RVs in phase one to the full extent that they are allowed in phase two. I think this would help bring all the owners in both phases together to form a more cohesive community and would add a fuller and better use of the properties in phase one, while still allowing house structures to be built on lots whose owners choose to build. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Scott Gronholm, president of the Sunset Isle Owners Association. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, let's ask, Mr. Hartman, do you have any?
Yeah, this is very straightforward. I remember that ordinance. It's 444. And what it is, it's a PUD, a planned unit development out there. And we've made a couple amendments to it over the years at the request of the HOA and the owners, you know, in there. And it certainly is easily done as far as a drafting exercise. It would be an ordinance, an ordinance pending the PUD ordinance, the original PUD ordinance, and with the language, I've got to look back at the language. It would be just identical to allowing RVs in phase two, which is add that language in phase one and first and secondary as far as getting this done. And we don't get into the covenants restrictions and all that.
Okay. Ms. Keisha, do you have any?
My biggest concern, Scott, is the park models. Park models, and we've seen it in all the, all the, in the park. They're not being removed in a timely manner, mandatory evacuations. They're only allowed to be there for 180 days, no longer. They're not being moved. They're, they're setting up shop, basically. And so that's, being the code enforcement officer and the floodplain administrator, that's, that's my view from it because they're just not getting moved.
I understand. And I, I voiced, we recently had a meeting and I voiced my opposition to the four park models. And we, I fully, I intend to give all of my force behind not allowing any more park models in our, in our, in the whole of phase one and phase two. There is one existing that's sort of kind of been there forever. And so we, we definitely don't want any more in there. And that one, I have intentions of making, we have actually required them to put new axles, new tires to where it is fully.
And it is required. That is required by city code. It has to be ready within 24 hours to be pulled out. Quick disconnect sewer, the low 50 amp electricity, everything. The wheels have to be on it. Everything has to be on it, just like a regular RV, you know? Even some of those don't get moved, you know? We're really trying to, if we had a really bad storm, you know, it would damage other people's property. And so I don't know if that's something that you can add into your homeowners association to where that you can enforce it more than we can as the city.
It's my full intent to do that. I have not been able to do that fully legally yet, but it's my intention to get our votes to where we have that. We change our, our rules in our subdivisions to not allow any more park models.
And that's concerning to me as well because I know that, first of all, these park models, as Ms. Keisha said, are supposed to be moved every six months, just moved to demonstrate that they can be moved and, you know, as an exercise.
What our intent is to actually implement that into our rules where that person actually has to move that park model off of the, off of the site every 180 days. Actually, every, every RV in the, in the old place needs to be.
Right. It's not just park models as all RVs because in your particular case, you're in a VE, you're in a high velocity, the whole Sunset Isle. The other, other areas, like even the beach is not even in such a high velocities zone because you're so close out there to the bay. So you, you have a, you know, a lot tighter rules there.
And if we had, you know, a good storm, a lot of those RVs and park models, which are considered RVs in the state of Florida, could easily end up in the water out there. And then they would become easily abandoned like some of the boats that we see sumping in the water. And that would be then a government agency's responsibility to remove those. That's why we have the state and federal government has those guidelines. So, yes, sir.
I, I should have talked to Keisha before we knew about this, but I, you know, I say all the time that we don't get involved in people's covenants restrictions, that sort of thing. However, an ordinance like this is policy from the city, right? And if we think that by moving ahead with this, that we're going to now encourage or there's a high likelihood that we're going to have more park models, more of this problem that we're grappling with elsewhere, then obviously that's something where you guys might say, hey, we don't know that we want to take this up. If, when we've done it in the past, we've asked for letters from the homeowners association, just like Mr. Gronholm came forward with today. And what would be potentially of interest, it sounds like, for the commission would be if the HOA came forward and said, hey, we've added to our restriction, covenants and restrictions that there will be no more park models brought in, then that would alleviate that concern completely.
Could that ordinance include the exclusion of park models? Because that would be my preference. If, if the city ordinance could actually, you know.
The problem is they are RVs.
They're considered RVs.
That is why we.
That's the problem I'm having.
So we exclude the park models, we exclude RVs as well because they're all the same category by the state definition. Mr. Melber?
You guys are covering it very well. Keisha and I talked about it earlier today about the park models. And Dan's right on target of what my question was, was coming up after hearing discussions, is if we could get the HOA to give us something in writing about the park models. And also, like I said, Keisha and I had a discussion about it today. And I also realized, I say I realized, I saw during this past hurricane evacuation, not particularly at your location, but there were RVs. It was park model, the RV, but here was, I call it a park model beyond an RV. But RVs and mostly the park models, they were not moved.
Well, if we, you know, I would be glad to give you that assurance that whatever we need to do that, because it's my intent that we don't allow any more in park models. And then maybe with Dan's help, I can, you know, whatever.
Yeah, and that would be the commission, right? I'm sort of confused in terms of, but if you conveyed to Mr. Gronholm that, you know, this, this request for an ordinance allowing RVs in phase two would be better received if it came along with the letter plus proof that you guys had had a meeting and you basically passed and recorded a, into your covenants restrictions, no park models in phase one. Phase two is what it is.
Or even the strict 180 days because they would be managing that, the 180 days and making sure that they're moved, assuring us that they're getting moved every six months and evacuated. That's the biggest, again, as the floodplain manager, I'm responsible. So I have to speak up for the city, especially being in the VE zone that you're in. And you can tell the elevations are very low. You can tell his house, you know, how high it had to be elevated. So that shows you how high the elevation would be required if something was to even be built there because of the wave action that's potential from a category five or four.
And those requirements are for all RVs, not just.
Not, right. That's all RVs. All RVs need to be moved every 180 days and they need to be evacuated during mandatory evacuations.
And personally, I don't have a problem with RVs and.
That's a beautiful thought.
Yes, and I was the one that brought the notion of promoting RVs and RV parks up to the TDC back, back in 15 or 14. And we promote the RV parks in Sunset Isle and TDC heavily. And it's a, it's a way to bring tourists and visitors here for at least a week, two weeks or longer, without impacting the community on, you know, on our resources and having to develop retention ponds and, you know, more water and sewer infrastructure and roadways, that kind of thing. And I know when our RV parks are out empty for, say, school started in August, the RV parks were empty. Business was slow downtown. We need the RV parks to be full. I don't mind if you have RVs out there. I love seeing it full. But we don't want them there whenever it's a mandatory evacuation and whether it's an RV or a park model. That's the way I feel.
Well, I appreciate that.
Or permanent, you know, it needs to be moved, you know, and make sure that it's roadworthy and the tags kept up and, you know, all that.
You agree that I came and spoke to you or asked you, I'm trying to get these.
Right. And I'm not against the park models. I mean, those are beautiful. People love to come stay in them. It's just the fact that we're fixing to tighten up on it and it's getting to the point where they have to be moved. They, they need to be evacuated. It's just not fair to the citizens.
And our RV park down by the Carabelle Beach Wayside Park, they manage that very well. They don't have abandoned RVs or, you know, and so that's something that's concerning as well. Just like we get abandoned vessels in the, in the, in the river and it slips. And, you know, we don't want that either. But you have, you have a homeowners association and covenants. So it sounds like you all have your regular meetings. So what could we, if we want to, you know, what can we do here?
And I don't mind, of course, Mr. Gronholm, but it would be, I don't want to, under your authority, basically that. And you guys would express it here is that you would, you would be more disposed towards such an ordinance if their covenants and restrictions reflected what, right? Is certainly compliance, they just adopt compliance with quick disconnects. And Keisha gave me those details, but obviously what we're sort of talking about, and I know Mr. Gronholm, he can speak for himself, but not the homeowners association on this issue, but basically no park models. We can't do that because there are these from a governmental perspective. But as a, as a community, you know, they can tell you what color your house can be, type thing. So they, they can draw that distinction in their covenants and restrictions. And they don't have to be naked. He could come back and say, hey, two thirds of the people aren't going for that. We still consider the ordinance. So you could, you could still move ahead and, or you could say, no, we don't want to create conditions for that problem to get worse in the city.
Where I said, I would be much more receptive, and I'm not against the RVs. And I'd be much more receptive if we could cover the bases without rehashing everything that's been said. If we could cover the basis, Scott could cover the basis as been described by you and by Keisha. With, and again, we can eliminate the park models. They're part of the definition, if you will, of RVs. But he, Scott could get, Keisha could get, Dan could present something to us in writing. I'd be a lot more receptive to it myself.
Should we, you know, and I don't, I don't want to disappoint you, but we're, this is your first request.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we, can we ask Mr. Gronholm?
Gronholm. Gronholm, that's right.
To get the details from Mr. Hartman and Ms. Keisha on what the wording needs to be regarding these quick disconnects and what it's, what it's termed. And take that back to your, do y'all have meetings every month?
We don't, but we can, you know, we usually have two a year, but. So it would be preference if we could somehow get a decision from y'all predicated on, you know, because I, I prefer these, these requests that Keisha's wanting. I mean, I'd like to be, for them to actually be in the ordinance. That would be helpful. So if we could change the ordinance to.
Well, you know, there is an ordinance, our flood ordinance requires them to be moved every 180 days. So there, there is an ordinance already in place. It's, it's just not happening. And they're also required to evacuate.
Do we have the police opinion? See, that's my problem. I don't know that I have.
You as a homeowners association, if it's in your covenants and restrictions, can do it. But the city can too, but we just don't have the staff when we're preparing for a hurricane to go around and clear out RV parks.
And knock on doors and look up tags and try to find the owner, call them in Georgia, Tennessee, get down here, you know? We just, they need to be responsible for their property.
And the way I, way I'm hearing it and the way I see it, if it's in your covenants or ordinance.
Yeah, we have your rules.
Your homeowners or owners of the property will be more informed than they will from the cities that they don't have at their disposal.
And we went, I went through this personally with the Carabelle Beach RV park and I've worked, they've actually moved theirs to the back out of the VE zone because they don't have, unlike yours, yours is all VE. So they've moved them out of the VE zone, which helps with that, in their situation. But they're still not evacuating them either. So we're, it's not just you that I'm getting on, you know? It's the other ones as well.
Could we potentially table this until he has time to go back to his HOA and get this straightened out and meet with the city attorney and their city clerk?
That's what I was asking earlier. I wanted to do something like that, but he says they only meet, they meet twice a year.
You know, we'll just, we should offer, I mean, we can call a meeting of the board, you know, and get these, these rules.
Which, I mean, and I explained to Mr. Gronholm that, that this was not going to be a one thing, you know, approval and you, you get to do it, that we still have an ordinance already. We're looking at a couple months. So he already knew that this was going to be.
Okay, where you could, you could get a letter from, from the homeowners association and plus the revised covenances. Would that be correct, Mr. Hartman, if we include that?
They, they do have, and I can walk through it both through the commission as well, but they would, on the most extreme end, it would be that there would be no park models in phase one, right? So when I say park models, obviously, I understand from our perspective, there are all RVs. But from a homeowners association perspective, they can draw that distinction between a drive down road RV and a, or hole down road RV and a park model RV, right? So they could, from the most extreme end, I mean, what I'm hearing, whatever, would be that if they eliminate park models and say, hey, it's just going to be hole in or drive in, you shouldn't have a problem with it. That's what they want. We already approved that. That's phase two. It's no big deal. That would be at the process. So my conversation with him, with Mr. Gronholm, would be, he brings that back to the board, he brings it back to his members. And if they, if they have enough people to say, yeah, no problem, we'll do that, we'll commit to that. If they brought that to us in the form of, again, recorded restricted covenant, amendment to their covenants, I think we're good to go. If for a button, some people say, hey, no, that's exactly what I wanted to do with a park model. There's obviously the middle ground of, they could adopt, which really, as Keisha already said, it's already on books. It's already on boards. They have that quick, they quick disconnect and all the flood stuff. So we'd still consider it, but we would actually go easier if there were no park models.
I mean, I personally don't even mind the park models. They are really nice and that's what a lot of people do prefer. But they need to be moved for safety reasons, so it's not an extra burden on the taxpayers.
So I, I like the idea that, you know, generally when you table though, you have to bring it up at the next meeting.
This one doesn't necessarily need to be tabled. Because we're not, it's not an ordinance. It's not for greeting. We're just discussing things and it's possible action, but.
But we could, we could then agree in principle and ask Mr. Gronholm. Sorry.
I'm not even going to attempt it, Scott.
Okay, Scott, Mr. Scott. So to go back to his homeowners association, see if you can get a special meeting here in the next two or three months and develop a letter and possibly revise your covenances and bring that back. And I mean, I think you know, you know, generally how we feel. I mean, you know how I feel about RVs. I've got an RV, so.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. Maybe Keisha and Dan and I can work together and get what we need to do and get it voted on and come back to y'all.
Okay, is that all right there, everyone?
That's great. Thank y'all very much.
All right. Very good. Nice to meet you. All right. We're going to move forward or do we need to take a break? Commission? All righty then. And, do we need to move forward? Do you have any? All right. So we have all business, item one, and it's regarding the draft amended alcohol beverage ordinance. So last month, we, I think we discussed it too much. So last month, we, I think we discussed it too much. We discussed it a little bit. Mr. Horton read or told us what Mr., the concerns of Commissioner Melander. And we decided to table because this is an important item. And we felt like that all the commissioners needed to have input on it. So then, and I gave a little bit of history on it last go around. But it's been going and coming since 1930. And it was brought forward by Commissioner Gray. Now tonight, unfortunately, we're missing another very important voice in our decisions here, Mr. Commissioner Walden. Unfortunately, it was an unexpected accident. But we can discuss, I would love to hear more of your idea on the differential between restaurants and bars.
Will?
If you don't mind.
Sure, I'm not totally settled on anything. But I can open up a discussion on it.
All right.
My thoughts were at the last meeting, my thoughts were, and I'd shared with you guys, when I mentioned distinguishing between a bar classification and a restaurant classification. And I see an attorney raising his eyebrows over there. No, man. Anyway, here's my thoughts. And I think I said that at the last meeting. My suggestion at that time was to, the measurement of the distance from the establishment, the business establishment and the church, continue to keep it in a straight line, not as you walk, here, there, wherever. And do it from door to door, not from property line to property line. Measure the distance from door to door. And for a restaurant, 350 feet on that distance from door to door. And on a bar, continue to keep it 500 feet. And I'll give you the thought process behind that. I was not here during all those discussions that the mayor mentioned where it's been changed all these years, back and forth and around and about. But I have been a member of the community and heard some discussions as well. And my thoughts, that a barroom is going to be more intrusive, if you will, than a restaurant to the churches. Inherent participation or activity out of a barroom. Barroom's going to be louder, noisier, more apt to have bands, et cetera. And that's the reason why I was kind of wanting to define a barroom and a restaurant. Because most of the requests that I've been receiving since I've been on this board to address this issue has been from people, business owners and customers that have expressed to me that when they go to have an evening meal, they want to be able to have a beer or a glass of wine. And to me, a restaurant should be a family environment where you can go and have a beer, a glass of wine, and maybe even a mixed drink, if that's what you choose. But that restaurant environment is not going to be, if you will, attract the people that are there primarily just to drink and maybe get too much to drink and get loud and noisy, have bands and that kind of stuff. Which a barroom is. Barroom, basically, you go in there for the purpose of drinking, not for eating. You go there for the purpose of drinking. And I go there, if I sit at that bar, I'm going to drink and drink and drink and I'm going to get intoxicated and I tend to get louder. Most, you know, most people do. That's just the inheritance of a bar. So anyway, that's my idea and my thoughts. And Mr. Attorney, you can weigh in on this. I would think that this board, which can, to my knowledge, and does create policy for this city. And that we should be able to, this board, with the input from the public sitting out there tonight, and hopefully, I'm going to make another suggestion in a minute. But anyway, that we can start defining the difference between those two establishments, the restaurant and the bar, to where we can suggest and have those two measurement distances from door to door, 350 feet for a restaurant, 550 feet, 500 feet for a barroom, which is currently where the alcohol ordinance is at right now, 500 feet. But it's measured from property line to property line. So anyway, that's my thoughts. It's open to suggestions and ideas, but this was not my, I didn't bring this to the board to begin with. This commissioner right here did. So I, but you asked me to do that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I certainly do appreciate it. And I have thought about that same thing for years. I really have, that, and to distinguish what is the difference between a family restaurant and a bar restaurant. I think that this, you know, I do feel like that we can distinguish that. And I feel like that can be put in an ordinance. And I did the last time we discussed this. I felt like that could be put. It just seemed like, you know, that folks just didn't want, wouldn't even consider anything less than 500 feet. But it seems, you know, we're not, no one has come up to me and called me and said, you know, no, it's got to be 500 feet like I was getting back in the day. Just as Commissioner Melander said, he gets people asking him or saying, I want a place to go sit down and eat and have a beer or a glass of wine. That's what I'm hearing. I don't hear anyone asking me for a new tavern in town. They want a place to sit down and eat and have a glass of wine. That's what I hear. Now, what have you been hearing, Commissioner Gray?
The whole reason I brought it up.
They want a place to have, they want a place to sit down and eat or you let them want a tavern?
No, and I think we're, are we like sold out of liquor licenses for bars right now anyway?
On-site consumption, they can have that. So, I mean, you could just have them lined up in a commercial district for on-site consumption.
Right, so you can have a bar that has, you just can't have packaged.
Off-sale, off-site sales.
Well, I think what Commissioner Gray's on that is I have, what they call a quota license for a bar. They're tacked out, they're all allocated. So, you know, you wouldn't get another Harry's or Club 98 or anything like that in Carabelle. And while Commissioner Melander was talking, there is definitions in statute of public food service establishment and standalone bar that are pretty good. So that there is a good distinguishing. And those are good because obviously, this is very well tried.
I knew that Attorney could come up with some.
So, but we could reference right back to statutory definition. If we want to make this distinction and come up with different distances for each, so no problem.
But what we have, and we have, and I think Courtney mentioned it, Commissioner Melander said this, I think, or it's been said before, that somehow, when we have a restaurant that is a, we think it's a family-style restaurant and they're selling 51% food sales, then all of a sudden, the chairs are pushed back and there's amplified music and now we've got, we've got a bar.
Well.
And so.
I don't lean down a roof.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But that's my thought process behind it, behind having a definition for both. Because once it goes past that definition for a restaurant, it's just becoming a bar. And when it becomes a bar, then it meets that 500-foot distance. There's a reason why I was wanting to keep it at 500 feet.
But I personally think that we should have Mr. Keith Walden, our commissioner, missing commissioner, on board to help us discuss this. He has to answer to his own constituents as well. And he wanted to wait until you were here so we could have a further discussion. And I think we should pay him the same respect and the city as well, the public.
Well, that's, that was going to be the other part of what I wanted to say. I'm going to make that motion. I'm going to make that motion that we table this subject tonight. But I would like, while we're here, some of the folks, I think, in the audience would like to make a few comments. And I'd like to hear some of them. But I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we table this till Commissioner Walden.
Okay. So we're tabled to the October 5th meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and we have that motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown, tabled to the October 5th meeting. And now we're going to have discussion. And we've all had discussion for now. So let's hear from the public.
Danielle Robinson.
Okay.
I like the 350 feet, but from what corner of property? To what corner of property?
No, from door to door.
Oh, from door to door, okay. I'm perfectly okay with that, yeah, because I just measured it.
Let me just add.
I just wanted to make sure.
I think Dan defined in his door-to-door was the main entrance to main entrance. Is that right? So we've got that part.
Okay, so on that, I'm perfectly okay. I just want to say, you know, there's a lot of things that you consider when you're trying to run a successful business. And unfortunately, you know, sitting down and having a good time, even with your family, trying to relax is one of them. You know, I'm not, certainly, I want my food because I think I do well at the food that I cook. I certainly want my food sales to be way more than my alcohol sales. However, the alcohol sales can impact my business financially. And I'm not, again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to bring in daddy, I mean, I'm not trying to bring in my daddy-like people. I don't even want to sell wine. The truth is, there's a couple of Korean drinks that, you know, are typically served with a Korean meal. And I'd like to see that happen. And I think that people like a little diversity. They have to, because I wouldn't have still been in business here now going into my fourth year of Korean food. So I would really like to see that, you know. And if it is 350 feet, again, I can assure you, I'm not trying to bring in a bar. You know, but I think that with everything, you need a little diversity. You know, it draws in people. And with that, I have to pay extra sales tax. You're trying to get this loan paid off in 10 years? I mean, if you introduce something like this, I know the half penny goes to the school, the rest goes to you guys. So we might be able to get that loan paid off in eight years versus 10. So I want to do as much as I can do to help you because it helps me, you know. So it increases, it increases, you know, business for me, which increases profit for the city, for the county, for everything, you know. And I certainly do not want another bar in this town. But I, you know, we should introduce something a little different. I mean, sodas is something that Koreans do drink with their meals. It makes the food taste different, just like when you eat sushi and you have ginger and wasabi. You clean your palate with the ginger and then you eat a different piece of sushi so that you can get the full effect of it. Sodas is the same thing. So I'm just, those are my thoughts. And I'm glad it's door-to-door because.
Well, we haven't, we have not.
It is door-to-door, it is 350 feet.
Everything is, everything is up for grabs right now and that.
Well, whatever I can do to help, please let me know.
In a rush, it's, we want to try to do it right so that once some of us are burnt out or voted out, then it won't go back to what it was changed, you know. And that's, you know, what was happening before. If you voted a certain way, you knew you were going to be voted out and then it would go right back to what it was.
Right.
So we want to try to get something that's lasting. I would credit that that's what we're working towards.
Well, if I can. And I said this once before and I'll say it again. I'm a very strong supporter of the churches.
Oh, me too.
Always will be. But since I was elected in 2817, I've heard it, I've said it tonight already, that people, over and over and over, about sitting and having their evening meal with a beer or a glass of wine.
And they shouldn't have to go to a bar to do it.
Exactly. And I'm thinking this is a, is a good.
Compromise.
Avenue to compromise and still respect the churches.
Yes, sir. Amen.
Okay, so.
Amen.
I hope you don't get missed.
Chase, did you want to speak?
Not really.
We didn't got the ball rolling.
I think I'll let me get to this moment. This is why I came tonight. I got an email reminding everybody, I missed the last one. I've been here. So I think what Ms. Melander is saying, you know, I think that's a great idea. I think we need, we do need to find a compromised place. I don't want to see a whole bunch of bars. I love Carabelle the way it is, you know. And I respect all our churches and we've got to give them the respect they deserve. So I think where y'all are trying to work this, I think it's great. And I look forward to hearing what we can work to come up with. Saying that's where I stand now.
All right, very good. All right, do we have any other public discussion on this item? Any other public discussion? We're ready to hear. We want to hear, we need input.
Our desk, one would be.
Yes, sir. We're not going to vote, oh, we're voting to table, yes.
Is, would you, would the commission like me to, and I know we're not voting on this tonight, but to redraft the ordinance to reflect sort of the discussions tonight? Meaning, when I say redraft it, right now, it's drafted the way the original conversation.
Gray brought it out.
Yes, the original conversation was measurement of distance, again, 500 feet, but as you walk, and I had a diagram and all this. It sounds like the conversation shifted to making a distinction between restaurants and bars. And if three of you directly to, I can bring you a draft to be discussing, so you'll have it in front of you for discussion purposes, as opposed to just discussing, but it's fine. Obviously, we could leave and wait till we have literally a vote on how you want me to proceed. But sometimes it helps to have paper in front of you.
I don't know, I don't know if I'm ready for a draft.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say. I think there's enough in our minds now, in our discussion that we've had thus far, that we're still, that we pretty much, Commissioner Gray.
How do you feel, sir?
Well, I've grown to the idea of the, like you talked about measuring instead of by way of walking the street from door to door in a straight line. And I'd like to see it at this.
Do you think.
Distinguish between a bar and a restaurant.
Okay, very good. Do you think that Mr. Hartman needs to develop a draft ordinance at this point?
I was feeling like I'd like to see it. I'd like to see what you can come up with with the distinction because I know the measurement in a straight line from door to door. I pretty much feel I know how that is. But I'd like to see what you can find and distinguish between a bar and a restaurant.
We both have comments, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I was just going to add to that. Would you be, would it be okay if Dan provided those definitions that he found tonight to us? Or we could review those definitions of a bar and a restaurant?
Yes.
All right. And all I'm trying to do, now I'm trying to, certainly, I don't want to create any additional work, but to streamline these, you know, because I know this is a hot topic. I've been on board for this since '03, I think, on the different changes we've gone through on alcohol ordinance. And we have momentum right now. We're talking about it, it's in front of everybody's mind. And in my experience, it helps to have a document where we're not speculating about what the definition is or what the language would look like if we did that. But if it's busy work, I don't want to do it. But if you all want to have it, that you think it'll speed up the conversation that we get to a quicker first reading if we're going to make a change here. That's the one I brought up, about looking to do five versions of it.
Well, I just don't, I don't think we're ready for our ordinance at this point. But you can give us a definition.
Yeah, I can certainly cut you and give you a sheet.
And what we need to do, and Greg will post that we don't have this live. And what we need to do, and Greg will post it, we don't have this live, and so it's not gonna be on the city, but he'll post it, you know, when he gets it uploaded and post it on the Carabelle Super, yourself YouTube, it started about 7:30 this discussion did, and go back and, we all need to look at this discussion and see what the things that we said to remind ourselves, take a note, make a list, and let's see what, you know, we can put together at our next discussion. Okay.
Do the different types of alcohol licenses, they come from the state, don't they specify bar, restaurant, isn't that already specified with the type of license, so wouldn't that make it easier for this purpose?
They are, but what's interesting, and just really looking at these definitions, is we could try to link it back to the type of license held, right, or the type of establishment, and they're so close to each other, but the thing that, for instance, you don't have this today, but when I looked at this, because Commissioner Melander was talking, they talk about a public food service establishment, you know, in building vehicle place structure or room, division of building, where food is prepared, served and sold for immediate consumption or in the vicinity of the premises, I mean, that, it goes on a little more, but that's the definition of a, I'm gonna call it a restaurant, but a public food service establishment. And then, when it talks about a bar, it talks about standalone bar, meaning licensed premises devoted during any time of operation predominantly or totally serving alcoholic red beverages, and it goes on, but what we wanna avoid, I think what we're trying to avoid, is a restaurant that does turn into a bar at night, right? Because then, and that, you could say, under that definition, that they are licensed premises, whether they're a restaurant or a bar, because they have a liquor license, one's a quota license, one's what they just call an SRX license, 51% food, 400, but if Keisha, the bloods code enforcement, it was determined that basically, they're a licensed premises, but they're predominantly or totally serving alcoholic beverages, and the food is incidental to the consumption of such beverages, and I agree with you that the SRX 51% license would probably keep someone from really getting away with that, but we wouldn't enforce that, right, that's the state enforcement, and I've had, I've had clients that were bars that had a restaurant open up next door and run a bar for years, to have, just get in the way of serving finger food, not doing 51%, and then, there's nothing we can do, we can't do anything, that's a state enforcement, we could complain to the state about it, but it wouldn't stop.
If we can, I'm more inclined to have a clear definition of hours, this says, that distinguishes between the two.
And I just wrote that down, our current ordinance now has hours of operation, we have hours of operation, and we could have hours of operation for 500 feet, and hours of operation for between 350 feet to 500 feet, or whatever footage, you know, if we go 200 or 400, whatever it is in between that bumper in there, you can have more hours of operation, of course, that's something that the police department will have to keep up with, thank you, sir, but you could have, you could have hours of operation, you could have noise, you know, noise ordinance, you know, all this, there are different things that you could put into it that would help to reduce the possibility of turning into a tavern after nine or 10 o'clock at night. Oh, now, following up on Commissioner Brown's question, does a beer and wine license versus a liquor consumption aside, both of them on premises, do they have a seating requirement? Okay, so I wanna know that, too, so bring that to us as well, what is the seating requirement limit or minimum for beer and wine license, what's the seating requirement minimum for a, it's not called hard liquor, what is it called, the consumption on premises, but the hard liquor?
Alcohol.
Alcohol is an ACP. Okay.
I know it was bugging me here, but we have to be careful not to get in the liquor licensing business, right, because all we can do is regulate hours and location, so we're regulating location and regulate hours, but I've gotta think about that a little bit.
Well, I would, I would suggest put that in the ordinance, but that would let us know what buildings we have that could be converted, you know, that could turn into, you know, liquor service.
They give out outdoor seating and that counts within their seating.
And that's what Ms., one that just came to us, wanted to upgrade from beer and wine to alcohol consumption on premises, and to qualify, they had to add seating, and the only place they had to add seating was outdoor seating, so that's something that we need to keep in our little checklist. And then they still, even if they meet the criteria of the ordinance, they still have to get approval from the board?
And the state.
The state first, yeah, the state first, and then the commission approve the zone and then the.
For places like, for example, Mr. Bo's Art Gallery, where he doesn't serve food, it's obviously not a bar, he just wants to do beer and wine, how would we differentiate that?
He would have to get a license from the state, and I don't know.
It's a, it's a bottle service license and it's $500, but that has nothing to do with restaurant or bar.
Are you talking about a bottle club?
Well, that's what type of license.
Yeah, bring your own, does he wanna do that?
I'm, I'm not speculating on what he wants to do, I'm just saying what I've witnessed previously, that that might be of interest, and how would we?
And you can go to the VR, DPPR's website and look at the different types, the two APS, which is basically like the dollar store, and the ACP, 4CIP, the bottle clubs, the bottle service, there's the.
And in the past, there was, there was one restaurant that had a bottle club.
Bottle club, and they charged a service fee for you to bring your own.
But they serve food.
Right.
I will say, this is a peaceful conversation, and it's good, and I think that it's productive. So are we finished for now? Do we, we're in the middle of a vote, we're in discussion, and we've got the motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown, to table this meeting to October, this discussion to Old Business on October 5th. Are we, are we ready to vote? Is the public ready for us to vote? It's eight o'clock. Okay, alright, we're gonna vote, to table. Those in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed to table? Okay, and this motion carries. Alright, very good, I look forward to seeing everyone next week, and that's all that we have on the agenda, it was a good meeting, thank you, and we're adjourned.